Five thirty on a Monday night, we do have a forum present. City manager?
So mayor and council, or not mayor and council. So tonight, we're going to talk about an update on the MGC. Everything from how the building's going to look, to what we should call the building, and potential sponsorship type opportunities. So Stacy and...
Yeah, yeah, so go ahead. I'm gonna try to get Stacy.
So Donna kind of said what I was gonna start with, so I'll reiterate just a little bit. We're excited to bring some tangible examples about what we've been planning for the MGC. Hillary has been carrying the ball for us since the beginning of the design process. I'm pretty sure that Hillary can imagine herself walking through the building at this point, she's been so...
How you dreamed it out.
Probably. So you'll...
Nightmare.
No, only good dreams. Only good dreams. So Hillary's gonna walk you through what the final design looks like, you're gonna be really, really excited about that. Our folks from Brandera are gonna talk a little bit about what we envision as the name for it, and then I'll take you through some maybe, you know, discussion about what our sponsorship opportunities could be for the building as we move into operation. So we've got a long presentation, so I'll let Hillary get started with this.
All right, well, welcome. I'm so excited to be here. We're finally at that point where we have almost the final design. We have one more meeting on Wednesday, that's our design meeting, so we're super excited about that. Out in the hallway, we set out a few of the boards that you will see more information on, but these are, you know, some of the materials that we're gonna be using, so these are gonna be really exciting to look at, so make sure you take some time and look at some of those. You'll notice on this first page, we have a photo, this is if any of you went to the meetings that we have when the artist was in town for a public art component of this building. He actually etched into stone a part of what he is proposing to do at our facility, so I thought this was really neat to include because you can actually see what it starts to look like and come to life. So the background, in August of 2016, we hired our BRS for short, and then we started right away in August and went through October of 2017, the facility design. We hired Burn Construction as our construction manager at risk, they've been performing the pre-construction services. And right now, since November, we've been working on construction documents. Those will be final April 27th, they'll send us this huge document that we get to review, and at that point, it also will go out to Burn Construction for them to start reviewing and then put out to the subcontractors, so that's when they start hearing dollars roll back into them. Below, you'll see this is a partial rendering of what our artist is looking to do, if you have not seen it, this is a cutaway from the building in the main lobby area, so as you approach it from either side of the building, either entrance, and we'll look at that in just a minute, you'll get to see these lovely etchings of birds and this flow going throughout the building. So when we were thinking about this building, we thought about major nature was a really big thing, we've got that Valley Vista property across the street, so we were looking at different colors and textures in this facility. These are some different inspirations that we pulled from. And then, again, all these different patterns that occur naturally, and what do they look like, one up or taken to a different scale or parts of nature that just add different elements and interests that you can ponder over as you're going through the facility. So as you look at this drawing, this layout, over here, you have Valley Parkway, you have Corporate Drive, so just to brand yourself a little bit. Across the street, you've got your Valley Vista property. So we're gonna take you through the facility, and as you'll see, our purple martin will move, but we're going to start and enter through the senior entrance, the senior lounge area. So this is what you would see as you're walking up into the senior entrance. You have the pool room over to the left, fits four full-size pool tables. You have a coffee bar area. You have wonderful staff to greet you and welcome you, introduce you to the center. And we have a lot of different textures and fabrics throughout the facility, but they all tie together very well. So as you go through the entrance, this is again, standing at the desk, looking back into the billiards area, now you're looking down this hallway, and that's going to lead you to the main entrance area. But off to the right are gonna be three separate community rooms, it can be one large room, or you can ride into three smaller rooms, and you'll notice this is actually a wood-looking element, so again, keeping with those natural themes throughout the building. This is what the restroom looks like on the senior side, it has those richer feels, so this is a tile up on the wall, it's got those richer darker colors, but it will feel very luxe when you go in there. So this is again, this was where you just entered, you walked down this hallway, these are the different entryways into the three different portions of the community room. You've got, what is it, a cutaway from a tree trunk, so you see that as you're walking into these different rooms. And this is what if you opened up all of the rooms and you have that one larger community space, on the far end, you will see a platform area where you can have performances, if you have a band come in or a speaker. There is a curtain on the backside, so it can appear to be a stage, but it's a raised platform. And you also, on the other side of that wall, behind that area, is an arts and crafts room, so it can serve as a room, it can serve as a backstage area for a performance, there's lots of different ways you can use that back room.
Council, you remember, you saw something very similar to that at the Grapevine facility, those of you that were on that tour, and I think you all commented that that was a feature you really wanted to make sure was included in this, but still a cool feature.
You'll also notice that right outside, you have this beautiful community porch area, there are doors outside for every one of these individual rooms, but there's also multiple doors once you open it up. So if you close this in and have three separate areas, this is just like the center corridor, if you have three separate rooms, so you can see it can go into an old fashioned, and you still have these nice elements like this overhead lighting, and there will be a flat panel TV that we can use to show presentations, different things on the wall, actually kind of where I'm standing.
Square footage of the three together, do we know off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, but I can give you that answer. So we're gonna move from the senior side, we're not gonna take a look at it, but there is a multipurpose room that goes multiple places, it can be utilized for senior programming, it can be utilized for other programming, it has a lot of different uses. So here we are, moving into the main area, and this will be the parking area again. This is the north lawn area, that is one of our own permits. So this is looking back, this is the senior entrance back here, and you've all walked all the way down, this is where the community rooms will meet into the main lounge area. So this can be used as a pre-event space, if we're doing something large in the community rooms, or it can be just used as a place for people to mingle, gather, and bring people together. So this is an opposite view, you're in the same spot, but you turned around, this is your welcome desk as people are coming from either side. These are small little areas for people, again, to wait for people in programming, or to come up there and do homework, or bring some coffee, meet with a friend, all different kinds of things can happen in these spaces. This person has walked past our welcome desk, and they're looking into the pool, so you're moving around the corner. In this next area we're gonna look at, it was based off of the prairie and the wetlands areas, and I think you're really gonna love this space, it's vibrant, it's pretty, and the kids are gonna, they're just gonna go nuts over it. So we've got this giant tree that's gonna be in the child-to-play area, and this is just a space for kids to come and play, and there's going to be on this wall like a climbing feature, but you've also got that space and that connection to the outdoors. And then on the other side of this wall, and we'll have a lockable door in between, is the child watch area. So we've incorporated some of the Leela elements into this by having this cabin-looking space right here, and so make it a little bit more fun. Floors will all be easy to clean. So you're going down a little bit further into the hallway, and you'll see the gymnasium off to your left. We did something a little bit different with this building, instead of the traditional gyms, we did the end-to-end, two middle school courts or end-to-end, with a basketball court that fits in the middle. So you have two middle school courts that turns into one basketball court. Typically, they're oriented a little bit differently, so we're being a little different here, innovative, but I think it's gonna serve as well. Off to the right, you have the pool, you have party rooms. In this gym, we're gonna have lines for a lot of different things. We have basketball, we have volleyball, we have pickleball, we have, we're planning for archery, I think there's another set of lines going down.
Archery?
Go ball.
Okay.
Is that all? Okay. But the basketball goals will be from the ceiling and as will the volleyball standards, so that's gonna come down when we need them and they will recess when we don't. This is one of the party rooms, so you can come and rent a room if you would like to have a party, can also be used as a classroom, it's very versatile. This particular room is also connected to the pool, so if you're wanting to have a pool party with us, I'm sure the fee structure will be appropriately priced, but you could come in, you have your own separate entrance, and then you can go into the pool. The other one's not connected to the pool, but it's right next door and will have some other wonderful things in it. So we're going to move from this hallway, we went all the way down here, that was the party rooms, and we're going to go into the pool area. So this is how it is laid out, we have women's restroom, men's restroom, and down the middle, you'll see this main corridor, there are six family cabanas, that can be used as changing rooms, or if somebody needs a little bit of extra space, I like extra space, but this includes a shower stall, a toilet, changing area, your sink, everything that you would need in a regular restroom, but it's just more private. So this is an example of what the locker rooms are gonna look like, it's gonna have that natural look to it, again, repeating some of those same things that you saw the first time. This is what it's gonna look like when you're at the very, entering the area of the cabanas, the cabanas are off to your side, but you're gonna immediately see this huge aquatic area, and once you get to this area, we don't have it in the pictures, but you'll see footprints of native animals put into the concrete. This is one of the views of the aquatic center, so this is the three lap lanes that we have in there. The slide will not be yellow, don't panic on the yellow, they just could not change it in their programs. So we have not actually given the exact colors because we don't have the exact manufacturer bit out yet, but it will be a more natural look to it. This is another view, this is from the backside where you can see the Lacy River, and you can see the activity pool, and you can also see how it's gonna interact with the fitness that are up above, there's gonna be some sort of frosting or something up here, so it's not gonna feel like people are watching you while they're working out. That's something we noticed at Grapevine, that we were very clear to the architects, we don't want that to happen here. So as you come out, over here, you just came out of the locker rooms, right across from that are your aerobics rooms, so we are gonna have better flooring, it's not gonna be hard linoleum, it's gonna be actually intended to have those higher-impact aerobics and then yoga, all kinds of different activities can happen, but they're going to be designed for that purpose instead of the classrooms that we have now, which are not designed. But you'll see this bright color right on the other side of this stairway, and that's going to be like our team game area. When we were going through this process, we did have some high school students that were serving on the design committee initially, and they said, well, where's our area? We said, oh, good point. So we talked about this area, and they thought it was a really great idea, so the graphics will be accordingly, and then we're going to talk hopefully with the action council and get some ideas of what do they actually want to see in this area, we don't want to buy the wrong stuff. So now we're gonna head upstairs and take a look at the fitness area and the track. So you'll see, again, another friendly face is gonna be greeting someone right as they come up the stairs, and we're gonna have staff that's roaming around helping people, it can get confusing which equipment to use and how to use it, and you'll notice you have these graphics that run from downstairs to upstairs, again, tying everything together, but keeping that natural feel to it. And a look at our walking track, so it's gonna go all the way around, and you'll get all these great views, so you'll get to peek into the aquatics, you'll get to peek into the outside, you'll get to peek into the gyms, you'll get to see all that excitement buzzing around down below. So things that are coming up, these are actually the colors that are gonna be more indicative of what's gonna happen in aquatics, so they'll be those blues, those greens. So we have our construction documents that are due on April 27th, and then June 5th, the subcontractor bids are due to Burn Construction. So that's a really exciting day where they get a bunch of faxes and a lot of dollars. And then on July 16th, barring anything happening with their quotes that come into them, that's where we're hoping to bring the guaranteed maximum price. August is when we hope to break ground for the new center, and then spring 2020 is when we expect to open the center to the public, so we're very excited about this. Feels like it's been forever, but it's coming very quickly. So Stacy's gonna talk a little bit more about some other opportunities.
Council questions on design, any concerns?
I didn't see any design, and I never saw it, and it was never brought up, so in fact, you said, and when you get to the top of the stairs and I'm going in, so ADA compliance, elevators?
We do have an elevator.
I assumed they're there, but they're not showing up, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I assumed they're there, but I thought I might see something somewhere.
It is right here.
Okay.
So the stairs are right here, they'll end up there, and the elevator comes out, and it's protected from the track.
And the greeting desk is where?
It's right around the corner, but we will have staff walking around, so...
Okay.
In the main lobby, when you first walk in, unlike in Flower Mound's right center, it's all, it's a tile floor, glass windows and everything, and it sounds like an egg chamber in there, and there's like kids running around, and it's just like, ours appeared to be, I mean, what is ours kind of designed, is there any design to, because it looks like ours is also a lot of those similar elements, I didn't know if we were gonna have any issues, and maybe because it's not the, everybody's coming in like the Flower Mound where everybody comes into that center section and it's just...
Noisy.
Oh, it's horribly noisy.
So we do have some acoustical, not panels, but pieces over the information area, these pieces up over here, this shouldn't be as loud definitely as Flower Mound, but the wood's not gonna bounce around quite as much as like a tile ceiling would. This is gonna be all stained concrete, but I think, because we talked about noise a lot, we want to be able to hear people when we're conducting business and when they're trying to come into the facility.
The design itself, is it supposed to deal with something about it?
I think it kind of pulls people away from, versus, everybody just seems to be right there and there.
And then it's smaller too when you walk in, right, much more concentrated and the noise bounces.
Tile and the pool section is right behind that main desk.
Yeah.
I think they have some design issues with theirs, and that's why it's a little overwhelming. If you remember with Grapevine, when you walked in, you really didn't notice that.
No, Grapevine's was fabulous.
Yeah, so again, same market tag, so we really tried to achieve some of those things.
I'll tell you the one thing that really popped for me, aside from the cutout where it was the inside of the wood versus the, which I thought was really cool, the wayfinding in these slides, I think, is outstanding, and I hope that translates into the real world, because I get lost in these buildings, and having that really clear wayfinding, I think is awesome.
Color scheme, what are your thoughts?
Sadly, the councilman had a question on the square footage of the senior activity room, Tim has some answers.
The three community rooms that you asked about, each are about 1,500 square feet, so about 4,500 total if you open all the walls and everything. I believe told about 100, I mean about 200 people, if you just have chairs, like rose chairs, or 600, or if it's dining with the tables, it's about 100 in each room, or 300 total.
So 600 dining is what I heard the fire inspector say.
No. I guess if you had a box lunch on your lap.
All right, any other questions? And in between the workshop and city council, we have some of the actual boards out front so that you can actually feel some of the elements and tiles and carpet that's gonna be in there, so I know it's kind of been a dream for a while, and we want to get some tactile reference for what that place is gonna look like.
You asked about color scheme, I didn't really get an answer, I mean, my response is I, there isn't anything I didn't like about the colors, I liked the, it keeps it light, bright, so, you know, more natural light works, gets more, you know, actual illumination out of it, darker colors over there, I liked every color I saw, I liked every design element I saw, I could even go with the yellow slide, it wouldn't bother me, it didn't bother me at all.
Very welcoming, kind of calming.
Up for the yellow slide, that just screams caution.
The nature of, the natural look, you know, the pulling in of the nature element, I think is outstanding, so...
Snap set, third job.
The cabin was cute, nice touch.
Yeah, that's really... All right, so, and you know, Hillary's been toeing the line on that, but this has really been a group effort, everybody in the city, from the city manager's office, through every department and, you know, facilities, IT, library's been on it, everybody has really contributed, and I don't think if we, if everybody wasn't in the room, I don't think you'd have this result, it's really been amazing.
It's been a very different process from what we followed in the past, I mean, from day one, each meeting had representatives from really all of the key departments, and so they'd come together, working hand in hand, and the real benefit is having that construction company in the room with us, talking about what options to select that's gonna save money. And so hopefully, when we get to that guaranteed maximum price, we're gonna be doing a high percentage of this project.
And we're really excited, so now that we've got the vision and what this place is going to look like and feel like, our next step is to move into the name and the branding of it, because we want a name that's gonna reflect a visual identity for us, something that we are gonna be able to energize people about coming to and visiting, that's also gonna set what our baseline for managing and leading this facility is, and I think we've come up with a great name that not only reflects great things about the facility, but really connects with 2025 and the standard that we've set for ourselves as a community there, and then following in that where our department is going in terms of raising the bar on what we want to deliver to the residents and visitors of Louisville. So a couple of months ago, we hired Brandera to come help us with this process, and I'm gonna invite Beth up here for Brandera to give a little bit of background of how we went through the process of coming to the name that we're gonna present to you, but also what we're gonna do from here on out to create that branding and marketing strategic plan for the building.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Beth Owens, I'm a co-founder and principal of Brandera. With a name like Brandera, you can imagine that branding is near and dear to our heart. We're delighted to be working on this project, this is definitely a signature project for the city of Louisville and a legacy project. You all are putting forward a unique facility, it's been a deliberate and thoughtful process. We were delighted to be brought in so early, where we were in on some of those initial meetings with the architect and the design team, many times that's all done and then we're the last one to the party, so it's exciting to see it all come to fruition, refresh my memory on that.
Just touch it.
Just touch, all right.
There we go. Recording.
So of course, the working name had been the Louisville Multi-Generational Recreation Center, which is not in fact a name, it's really a description of the function, and so we have been working on something much more engaging, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about the process, so you understand, you know, how everyone came to the table and how we worked together to come up with our proposed name. So the first thing we did was an immersion day, we came and spent significant time with Parks and Recreation, city team, really drank the Kool-Aid, if you will, of, you know, the perspective of what's going on in the community, how the facility's gonna be used, what's important to you all, the vision of 2025, just all of those things. And some things really bubbled to the top, which we defined as the wow factors, what was significant about this facility. The commitment to public art is extraordinary, it's a defining characteristic about the facility, nature's influence, the importance of it, you know, in the aesthetics and the life of the center, the indoor year-round pool, which has been something that has been coveted for some time, and then the designated spaces for all ages, you know, wide variety of places to interact. We like to think of this as, there's living room, if you will, there's gathering spaces, you know, frequently you think of, there's your home and there's your office, and then there's that interaction that you can do at the Starbucks, and it kind of has that feel where you're able to, whether it's, you know, have a meeting with someone or just, you know, interact and have time to visit. In terms of the target market that this facility addresses, really, we're going after multiple target markets, so families, you know, looking for activities, summer camps, unique programming, seniors, we want to make sure that they certainly have a place, and I know that was a sensitivity, that, you know, oh, are they losing their identity? No, they're gaining this interactive space, and so there's not gonna be senior in the name anymore, and, you know, we've been involved in rebranding initiatives throughout the Metroplex and Parks and Recreation facilities, and one of the branding initiatives that we did this last year was the Senior Citizen Services of greater Tarrant County. We renamed it to 60 and Better, because no one wants to be labeled as a senior, I don't care how old you are. Teens, we want to do offer programming and, you know, an opportunity for them to get involved, and then singles, you know, let's have a space for them where they can make friends and have activities and have a real local feel. So we're gonna go after all those target markets. We were thoughtful about the competitors in the area, Grapevine and Flower Mound, what's going on at Plano, Capel, we also compete to some degree with YMCA, fitness studios and classes, and of course, kind of your bigger churches that have fellowship or activity centers. So this is all kind of in the mix in terms of, you know, who you compete against. We did a SWOT analysis with the group, and we talked about, okay, what are our strengths? So clearly, you have the opportunity for more amenities and really diverse programming, this gives you local fitness, you don't have to drive far away, it's right here, the gymnasium workout area, that track and that year-round indoor pool gives so many opportunities for great programming. It was not lost on us, the quality staff that you all have here, there's a real passion and purpose. From our initial meeting, you could see like, oh, we just can't wait, you know, we've been operating in some facilities that, you know, are kind of dated and don't really, you know, have everything for us, so this is just an opportunity to reimagine what can be offered in a recreation center. Weaknesses, so, you know, there's some folks that just, you know, they're not really plugged in, they don't know what's going on, they don't, you know, they don't have the total vision, there's gonna be a higher cost, the membership, or the fee structure obviously will be higher than what they've experienced in the past, but it's gonna be well worth every penny, and then we're gonna mix different user populations, and so sometimes that can be, you know, it's just different, but I will tell you that when you put, when you put a senior population or that actively engaged population with the younger, you know, it has a tendency to bring the age bracket down, and that's always a good thing. So other opportunities that we wanted to consider is, you know, we have to do some strong marketing efforts to really raise the awareness, we want to consider public transportation, you know, to the facility, there's some population groups that just simply are not kind of in the mix right now, and they're not involved, and this will be a great, a great chance to engage them. Challenges that we have, you know, there's some, you know, in proximity... Challenges that we have, you know, there's some, you know, in proximity, there's established centers that you'll go head to head with. There's some poor perceptions of some of your current facilities, just because they're, you know, needing, needing an upgrade. And then the senior citizens, you know, there's some anxiety on their part to some degree about, you know, will we have ample space for the programming and the needs that we have? So in terms of programming, the list was really long of the things that can be done, you know, everything from group exercise to pickleball with active tournaments, archery, chair volleyball, and then technology classes, STEM activities and programs, which is so consistent with what's going on in the school district, intergenerational programs, creative arts, fine arts activities. So it's really, it's fitness, it's aquatics, it's enrichment, it's gathering time, it's appreciation of the arts, it's just all of those things. So from an amenity perspective, you guys hit a home run with this. In terms of communication platforms that are used, you know, we kind of measured results in social media, it's certainly a very popular platform here. Seniors use that word of mouth is their most frequent form, and we're doing some testing, we'll be doing testing on some direct mail responsiveness. So we also did a focus group, so we didn't stop our questions with just that immersion day. And some of the things that, you know, again, came out of that focus group was, you know, what's the personality of the upcoming center? And I know that seems odd, but we like to put human attributes to a facility. It allows us to kind of define, I don't know, the look and feel and how we're going to talk about it and how we're going to message about it. And so fun, friendly, natural and vibrant. Wouldn't you like to go, don't you want to know that person or know that place? And then the color palette, as it relates to the logo, that natural, earthy, no neons, no pastels, so really living with this color palette that was established. So we want to make sure that there's a consistency. So we looked at some logos, just to get a sense of what did the team seem to like? And full disclosure, Brandera did not design these, otherwise I probably wouldn't be standing here if I had that. So or the NFL, Jerry Jones and I would be great friends. Anyway, there was a kind of a desire, more of a substantial kind of emblem badge, and we just, we went through kind of a creative exercise and we showed different styles. And then, again, we talked about the personality of the center. So friendly, casual and progressive. Doesn't that feel good? Don't you like those adjectives? And as a place to live and work, participants believe that the convenience, the infrastructure and diversity make Lewisville really stand out. We also looked at, you know, the geography of this community and that small-town feel, how that differentiates you from, you know, your neighbors in east and west. And then we also talked about that this new center should really be that fun destination and gathering place for all ages. So when asked to describe what this center should be, it was like a home away from home. So a place that you really feel welcome, that you're going to see friends, you're going to walk in, for those of you who watched Cheers back in the day, you know, they're going to know your name, you're going to walk in and you're going to be greeted.
Oh, dear.
I'm sorry. Cheers, my bad.
I seem to think that there's six other people that have.
So as it, again, with that focus group, participants were really excited about the indoor aquatics, the leisure areas and the art installations, because those are new features. There's nothing else like that. The name should not, we talked a lot about like, okay, we may have done the path of historic, you know, citizens, the community, your forefathers or that kind of thing, and the answer was no. We did not, it was definitely no. They really wanted something that was forward-thinking, because that's what this center is. This, again, recreation reimagined, so totally a new experience for everyone, so we wanted to make sure that the name goes down that pathway. And we wanted to make sure that the name is relevant, so let's not have, you know, I don't know, something waterfalls or canyon or whatnot, if in fact, we don't have those things in the community. So on our recommendations, you know, as I said before, the Lewisville Multi-Generational Recreation Center, though a working phrase is not the name, it's a description, and just, that's a mouthful, and that doesn't sound very sexy. I'm not hosting a reception there, that doesn't sound very fun, I can't print that on an invitation for something really neat. Then in terms of words that we, you know, kept hearing, these, you know, progressive, friendly, modern, energetic, these are the words that just kept bubbling to the top every time we talked and every time Hillary walked us through the facility, you would just listen and you would hear these phrases. So why does a good name matter? Well, we want people to rent the facility, and we want them to be excited about it, and we want to host things, and, you know, we want to communicate, you know, that this is different. And, you know, by having a traditional name, doesn't quite, doesn't quite get us there. So, you know, to kind of backtrack, so we had our immersion day with the focus group, we did a creative survey, we really worked, you know, worked through both words and thought processes that really encompass the spirit and purpose of this facility. And, you know, we had this comprehensive plan that we're going, we're going to go through here in terms of, you know, we had this immersion day, and then we did this focus group, and we did these findings, and we had forty names on our original list. And we presented them to the city leadership team, and then we picked up another twenty-nine names, because we have these different, you know, pathways that we wanted to walk down. And then we narrowed that master list to two names, and we brought those forward to the 2025 advisory board and the parks board. So there's been a lot of thought process in this and, you know, kind of wrestling things together. So these are the words that we kept hearing as we worked through different phrases, positive, upswing and life and horizon and rebirth and nature and upward, a lot of positive energy. And we wanted, we wanted a word, a name that really packaged all that, and we looked at, you know, names in the community at large, we also looked at names that we definitely would want to steer away from, you know, there's so many communities that are still sporting the Fireside Recreation Center, the Longhorn Activity Center, the Bachman Recreation Center, just doesn't sound very exciting, right? That does not give us that, you know, recreation reimagined. And the names that are kind of coming forward in terms of local communities that are doing new facilities, the Summit in Grand Prairie, the Epic, the Brick in Burleson, the Core, the Link, so, you know, a kind of a shorter name, and not this descriptive recreation center. So given this phrasing, we wanted something that had an active voice, that had energy to it, that conveyed kind of the activities that would happen in the space. We wanted something that had legs from a creative perspective that we could build a campaign on. And so the word that we came up with in our new name is Rise. Now, wouldn't you like to go to Rise? Wouldn't you like to take some, take a class there? There could be the Rise and Shine Club, the Early Risers, you could be part of the Rise to the Challenge Group, I mean, lots of great things could happen there. And think about that on an invitation, think about that on a call to action. It's a strong word, it's a short word, it's memorable. So that's the name that we're putting forward, and that's what we, through kind of our evaluation process with the 2025 and the park board, that they wanted us to present here tonight. So questions as we think about this?
Do you mind me asking what was second place, the one that didn't win?
Lark.
Lark, yeah.
Lark?
Yeah. It was an acronym for.
Oh, another acronym, please, not another acronym.
It was sort of Lark for the same.
If there was, if there was, this was an acronym for something.
Please, no.
No. No, we kind of went down that road and.
So the idea is, we need to establish this name, then we'll step into the logo development process, and then we'll work on a tagline. Those will roll into the strategic marketing plan, branding implementation with creative concepts, advertising campaign, all the things that you need to make this facility come to life in the community.
So council, certainly this is a decision point for you. So we need your input and your direction on the name. If you hate it, we'll go back to the drawing board. So I will tell you, we've spent a lot of time, and this is a very challenging issue, believe me more challenging than I thought it would be. So I would just open it to you and ask you to give us some input and direction.
Brett, can you start?
Brett, can I ask you a question first?
Okay.
And you don't have to answer, but you asked what was second place, was there a reason? Obviously, there was.
Well, I. It's unexpected, I'm sure.
I guess, when I first heard it, I would just kind of like, oh, let's go to Rise, let's go to the Rise, let's go to.
Well, here's, here's the thing with the new name, we have to train you on it, like, what is challenging about this process, and we talked a lot about it in our sessions, is to just hear it one time or to see it on the page, it's a little out of context. And so with a good branding initiative, we'll tell you, I mean, I'll be honest, we're going to tell you what to think about it, why to think that, we're going to give you visual cues, we're going to give you colors, and all of that's part of that branding process.
So I like the idea, like you talked about, I mean, if somebody has a wedding there, forty-five hundred square foot is a nice ballroom space, so, I mean, that all sounds good and everything, so I just haven't, I don't know, I'm still not, I haven't become emotionally attached to it yet. I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just saying.
I will tell you, when we were working on the Arts Center, and we had the proposal for the grand theater, and if you remember, that came through really a sponsorship type program, naming rights program, and I thought that was the worst name I had ever heard. I thought it sounded like a multi-theater. But it kind of grows on you and over time, you know, and we didn't really do a great job because of the way that process occurred in actually being able to go out and market and do all the things that she just described, but I do think a name has to grow on you. So I would like to give you guys some time, so, I mean, I want to hear from all of you. I don't think you have to make this decision tonight.
Anything else, Brett? No, I mean, I'm also one too, that, I mean, I know there's been a lot of work and a lot of people are invested in this, and I don't necessarily think that my opinion's better than theirs on this one. I remember I hated the ballpark in Arlington when they first came up with it, then it became my favorite, and then they screwed it up and changed it. And I hated it in the beginning, and it was like the greatest name for a ballpark anywhere. So I just haven't become emotionally attached to it yet at all, so.
We understand.
TJ.
I know a bunch of people put a lot of time into it, but the first two things it triggered was, this is either some sort of uptown bakery, or, or it's one of these hip, new, trendy Christian church Easter services. It doesn't, it doesn't speak to the space for me. I'm no good at this, I, horrible at this, so I, you know, if I had a better name, I'd be spitting it out there, if I thought something would, so I don't have one. So if there's a bunch of people that are invested in this, and they feel that this is where it can go, I understand that, I see a bakery when I see Rise. Or I see really cheesy Rise and Shine, and it's happy cloud, breakfast morning people. So that's.
Well, it'll open at 5:00 AM.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I'm going to have to work on that. But that's me, that's my baggage.
Neil?
So, kind of where to begin, and still keep it brief, I went to the presentation where afterwards, there was, I spoke to several people, one in particular said, well, it didn't really strike them either, but give it a month, and after a time, they kind of decided they liked it. So I've given it a month, and it hasn't happened for me at all. The first problem and the irony is hearing some of TJ's comments, because they absolutely appear along my. I went out and did a little bit of my own market research and asked a variety of people some unbiased questions. For example, if you see an architecturally interesting building that has clearly a public lobby space that people can go into, and on the building it says The Rise, or just the word Rise, what do you believe that would be? And the first most common answer was a church. That was the most common answer. I got other answers, but that was the one that I heard most consistently. That's an unbiased question, I'm not saying if you're renaming the Lewisville Multi-Generation, no, no, there's no clue here as to what the purpose is. So then the question was asked for other people in a different manner, you know, if you had a recreation center that also had a swimming component and a senior center, you know, give me some names, and I ended up with probably, and I haven't counted them, but probably eighteen, nineteen names, and I can pick a half a dozen of them that I like better than this name. So I thought one of the more creative names somebody gave me was the NRG, the Natory, and so you don't like acronyms, but I liked this one, the Natoryum Brick and Gathering Center, the NRG. I don't know that that's very clever, but I don't have to have clever, I just need something that I can get attached to. Yes, you can make a name stick, Orbit doesn't sound like it would be a chewing gum, but if you work hard enough at branding, you can make the name work. On the other hand, there have been instances where, no matter how hard they worked on the Arch Burger, or the Zune, or the Apple Lisa, or the Pepsi Crystal, it bombed. So you can't always make a name work, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't, and all those, those are four major big companies that could not make a name work, Microsoft, Pepsi, Apple, and Donna's, and they couldn't make the name work. So branding doesn't always function the way you hope it will. I think Donna will agree that if anybody is passionate at this table about the topic of branding, and, you know, James has had to put up with me too, it's me, branding is a big deal with me, it's been a big deal with me since before I walked into city council. So it's a big deal on this building, and so I think the name is critically important. I cannot, I just can't get attached to this name, and I've had enough to do it. And like I said, I've heard, I've heard better names since, so I threw a few of my own in the list, but I'm not sure that are the better choices of some of the ones I've heard, but I just, so my thought is, if nothing else, is that I'd almost be, I realize there's a tremendous amount of work behind this, and I totally agree with a lot of the philosophical elements, you know, what are we looking for in a name, what should it conjure up, all that sort of thing. You know, I totally agree with the, with the description of what we're looking for, all those descriptive elements, it's the name itself that doesn't, doesn't work for me. I wondered about going to the public and saying, you know, what would you call it? But no promises, we're not necessarily going to guarantee, we're going to pick one of your names, but let's hear what you had to say. I just like to find, I don't know, I just can't do this one, I'd start from there.
James, could you talk about going to the public, because that's one thing we've had.
Cities have had very bad experiences with that. What often happens is people become very emotionally attached to their favorite choice, and if their favorite choice is not chosen, they are extremely reluctant to ever adopt the one that was chosen, because their choice is so much better. As an example, probably one of the most famous tourism slogans out there is, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. When the CBB in Vegas launched that, the local newspaper did a survey, a poll in their paper to find out, and more than seventy-four percent of people in Vegas hated it. But you ask them now, and they've adopted it, and other people copy it all the time. So there's ways to get input, certainly, so long as it's very clearly delivered that, you know, people should not get totally attached to one choice, because that one choice probably won't get picked.
And I think you can do that, and I think you've probably seen where this has been done, and we're also going to be looking at other ideas and other sources for naming, and in the end, we're going to put all that together and decide which one. So, you know, it may not be a citizen selection, but we're open to ideas. And I think you put that out there from the get-go, but, and I don't want to break your heart, I know that you, I think you like this name, I know you'd like to see it on all of the building documents, so you're wanting to get something fairly quickly, and I understand the desire to do that, but I would trade, I'd be more than willing to trade off putting MGC stamp. trade off putting MGC stamped on the documents for the time being to get the right name. So that's not a prior, that's not my priority, my priorities then.
Just a quick question, does the, does the Parks Board and the 2025 Committee, maybe is that...
I watched them, I watched them come to their decision, and it did not have, from my observation, a huge amount of energy. It seemed to be kind of a, well, we're down to this, let's pick one, okay, how many are in favor, all right, let's, okay, let's do this. But I didn't see that, you know, I didn't, nobody made a speech as passionate as I just made in favor of it. So does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, I think that the process, you know, was to present it, you know, not everyone has a passion for, for marketing, or is skilled, or understands branding or whatnot, so I, I, I mean, having done this many times in many places, you know, we present all kinds of concepts and looks and whatnot, and very rarely is there like, oh, like, you know, huh, I get it. I mean, like, you know, occasionally you've got somebody who's like super dialed in, and that's like, I mean, that's their, their career path or whatnot, and so it's really means something to them. But frequently, it's kind of like, huh, this takes some time, like they have to marinate on it. It's a really hard thing to like present and then like, you know, not have time to cook, and like also without context clues, it's really hard.
Sure, but without context clues, then you have to start dealing with, okay, what would the implied perception be? And the implied perception here, the number one answer is, is it's a church.
Okay. Let's move on around the table. Bob?
I must admit, I wasn't, the name didn't grab me, and, but I have the same feeling that I would like to let it sort of percolate and see if it rises to the top.
See, no. Mouth, mouth!
Even though I looked at this, you know, when it was first, when we first got it or had it available, but it hasn't done that to me yet. So maybe, maybe pretty soon it might, but it doesn't seem to have done it so far for me, so...
Brett?
Yeah, uh, may, I think I agree with all the council here. This, this just doesn't, I remember going through the packet and I got to the end and I was like, okay, and I kept flipping, where's, this is it. I mean, maybe, we all don't know marketing and branding, I surely don't, I'm an accountant, but I just know it doesn't move me. And like, maybe time will, will do it. I understand a lot, I mean, I don't want to get in the way of a lot of work, but I just know this is going to be a, a name that we have, and I'll get excited about it. But I guess that's the, from my, from my perspective.
Okay. I don't have a follow-up name, but I don't do branding, and I don't do colors.
So I'm a...
It's probably going to be too, and this is probably a bad comparison, but like AT&amp;T Stadium, nobody says that unless they legally have to because they're reading in on the contract. It's the Death Star, you know? So if it's Rise, it's probably going to become something else. It's not going to be the Death Star, it's the Death Star.
Starkiller base.
So council, obviously though, your input is critical, and so I think what I want to do is go back and work with our consultant and the team, and develop a, a new approach, and bring those options back to you. So let me give it some more thought, work a little bit with our consultant and the team, and come back to you later.
There's some comments raised about moving forward with ABC or MGL as a placeholder right now?
That will, that will have to be what we'll...
Okay. We've got to do that, that way we don't go backwards on all this.
Yeah, we can do that. Let us work on it a little bit more.
Thank you.
I like one word you said, I'll come back to you with options plural.
I'm curious, you're probably invested in this more than just about anybody, what do you think?
Well, I like the name for several reasons. One, I really do, when I made the statement that it reflects where, why y'all adopted 2025, because this, this town is on the rise, you know, this, it was, we're moving forward. I like it because the rest of the recreation centers that have recently been built in this area have been named after an inanimate object. The apex, the summit, the, the, the. And this is a verb. It's, it's always going to be a lot, right? It's always going to have, not legs, it'll always have wings. And I really, really liked that about it. I also thought from all the names that we moved through, it was the most marketable thing that I could sell, that I could package, is come, come grow your game with us, come, come, come rise to the top. Let's rise to the occasion. Right, let's, let's, let's hit the risers, let's, let's, let's go. I mean, I've got it, you know, TJ's got me, our Casimir, uh, Gomor's got me trained for punny responses, and I've developed like a hundred of them for this. But that was kind of, once we, and you know, like you said, we've, we've had time to ruminate on it, and there's been a whole bunch of, of names of the 49, the 90 that we looked at, we had the same response that you did to 86 of them. So there were things that we were looking at, this really resonated with our team. Our team has thought that you, you have challenged us to step up our game, and this, this is how we've responded. Are we married to it? No, we're dating seriously. We're dating seriously. Dad is throwing a...
Does this word have an unexpected meaning in another language? Did you look at that?
We did. James, I'd like to get his perspective on this too, he's been pretty critical in this.
Because I have my list that I found.
So as I'm looking at it, of course, I'm coming from the branding and marketing perspective and not so much the programming. And, but the programming side in a lot of ways does drive this for me. Knowing what our key competition is, there's no other facility really in Lewisville that goes into direct day-to-day competition with our neighboring facilities. The library stands alone. Now, yes, people have to choose between libraries, but they tend to be very focused on one. The Arts Center, we're competing with the corporate world, we're competing with Denton, but in our area, there's not another facility. This Rec Center, every single day will compete with the Flower Mount CAC, and with the Core and Capel, and with all these, and the private gyms, the list you saw. Every single day, people who work out, like Donna and Linda, not so much me, people who actually go there, will have to make a choice of where they go. So that's why I immediately in my mind eliminated the traditional naming, the recreation center, the multi-generational, and one thing that I just like called the Multi-Generational Recreation Center. And it'll be empty, because people will choose something that gets their attention. The marketing opportunities, it took me a little bit to really come on board with this name. But as I started to think about the implications and how it, for me, reflects, it's, what really sold me on that was that it's not a noun. A noun, nouns are very important. We have to have nouns, but nouns are just a thing, or, well, we can say it, a noun is a person, place, or thing. It's an object. By itself, a noun does not represent a call to action. A verb is an action word, and a verb does represent a call to action. Maybe this is not the verb we wind up with, but there's a lot of advantages to looking in the verb field as opposed to a noun field.
So this is challenging, council. I, I was in the, on the team that went through numerous names, and I'll be honest, I can't tell you that anything totally resonated with me, but neither did the Grand Theater. And now I love that name. So let me get back with the team, we'll work on a new approach. I'm not going to promise you I won't bring Rise back as an alternative, because I think...
Keep it in the mix.
Keep it in the mix, because I do think that there are a lot of positives, and it's unique, and I always like something that's unique. But let us spend some more time with our consultant and our team to look at the process, and then we'll get back to you.
One thing... I'm happy to sit down and spend some wonderful time to get educated.
And punny to death.
I collect a collection of notes that I have from a little independent research.
I would say this, Stacy, you've done, I mean, I kind of wrote my eyes on some of the Rise, but I mean, maybe if we put some more marketing or how, how we would brand this Rise, maybe that would help, because just, like I said, just Rise alone is kind of, huh, but...
And I think that's a really good point, Brandon, that we, we bring back maybe a couple of options with some more of the pitch and what that pitch would look like, what goes along with that name. So I think that, that helps all of us. So let us spend a little bit more time with you, and we'll be back. And if you have thoughts, issues, I'll get with each one of you individually, so I can get that additional information for you too.
I can tell you, if Lark was second...
I can't even imagine what it would be.
It was a, it was a silly, silly day.
I have to add one thing for fun. One of the comments I got was, as long as you don't name it The Shrek, so...
The Shre...
Yes.
Got that.
No, I was saying, we'll name it The Shrek.
All right, we do have one more topic, if we might have a few more minutes.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks, um, thanks.
Thank you. We can do the agenda, very quickly.
Yes, it's very short. So the next thing we wanted to talk to you about was, come to you, you kind of get some guidance on what your thoughts were on moving forward with some sponsorship opportunities, because we're starting to put together, actually, we've done a lot of work on our operational plan, and this is one of the pieces that's still kind of, we haven't put in place yet. So we know that we're not looking at naming the entire facility like we did with the, with the MCL brand, but there are individual components within the facility that really do lend themselves to sponsorship opportunities. Obviously, the gym, the fitness area, our lounges, I think Game Room, I think, is a prime place for some sponsorship opportunities. Maybe the patio, depending on how we decide to recognize sponsors. And we need to talk about what our considerations for that would be, is what would be the uses of the funds that we get from the sponsorship? Would we consider to use them to get some of the alternate construction components that we don't think quite fit in the project budget right now? Would we use the funds as supplemental operating funds, you know, as a yearly cash? Or would we use it to bank for future capital projects? Whether that would be taking some of the shovel-ready components that we don't build now, when we get some more money, or when we need to do like major improvements or renovations? Because this is a living building, and any building that you build, no matter what you think you've designed, in 15, 20 years, there'll be something that we need to change a little bit, we need to think about. We also need to talk about what that recognition would be. What would our signage look like? Would it be just kind of subtle, like this Microsoft lounge in another facility? Would we put something, you know, a little bit more pronounced, like the Chase Lounge in another recreation facility? Or would we just encompass it in some of the wayfinding signage that we've already got designed? So those are some of the things that we need to talk about. And we also need to talk about what the length of our relationship would be with any company or organization or individual that might want to dip into sponsorship with us. Would we look at something more like we had with the MCL brand, where there's a termination to it? Would it live out throughout the life of the building? I think that would be a little bit of, if you think that we want to look at sponsorships, we would start working with a company to build these projects. So any questions about the, the sponsorship?
Any opposition to...
To us looking at sponsorships and coming up with some concepts?
No opposition, I mean, I'm that precise, we saw chairs at, at the Park in Dallas, and chairs would sponsor, where people had said, you know, donated, I'll sell a chair, I'll sell a stool, I'll sell a tree, I don't, you know, it doesn't matter to me.
True, but I think what, what, one of the things that we want to make sure is let y'all know that we would do it something that, that resonates with the building. I mean, there would not be a neon sign, you know, something that flows very...
Not saying you get to go to buy something and bring it.
Yeah. So, and, and you know, in doing that, when we look at the sponsorships, our recognition program might not be the same as, you know, out on the building under a neon sign, or even really prominent, might be a little bit more subdued, because we really wanted to, to reflect the nature of the building and the design.
If McDonald's wants to pay for the yellow slide, they can't.
Do we?
I don't know what building that would be at.
Is it just like Community Room 1, 2, 3, or is it going to be, we have a name for the ballroom?
We do not have a name for, for the ballroom yet. That's going to be a little bit of the branding stuff that we talked with, depending...
If somebody decides to have a wedding, we're having in the wedding room at Community Room 1.
Right. No, a little bit of, that, that's also a little bit of the naming, depending on what name we go with, kind of runs that flow, so...
It's Rise, it wouldn't be a Roll, it wouldn't be the name.
Yeah.
Hush, shine, ballroom.
So, but yes, we're not, we are, we are looking at that, that, that information. So if, if y'all are okay with that, we'll start kind of putting that in together. You know, we don't have a lot of time, but we'll come back with some, some options on that. So our next thing, well, I guess number one's a little different now. On April 16th, we're going to be naming for the facility to y'all, but I guess we might, we might bring something back then. General steps for the calendar 2018, we really do need to start finalizing our proposed operational budget, knowing that you want to look at some sponsorship opportunities will help us do that. One of the things that we'll roll in with that is we need to establish a cost recovery model. And a lot of people say, well, why don't you just set a percentage and set your rates for that? But this is really more about a philosophical discussion about what is this building's access going to be like for everybody? We've talked about how we're going to need to raise rates to meet whatever cost recovery percentage we establish, but we also want this facility to be open to everybody in the community, and how are we going to accomplish that? And that's really going to be something that, you know, we're going to need some help with. So I think you're, and I think it's starting in August, we're going to bring in somebody, and we're going to have some long discussions about that, because this isn't only about setting what our rates are for this building, it'll impact how we charge rates and what we charge for the rest of our, our, our activities and programs too. What will Harren's cost recovery be like? And so those are some discussions we'll have. We'll look at determining our sponsorship opportunities. We will start recruiting and hiring staff at the beginning of next fiscal year. It's very, very important that we have a facility manager in place as we're rolling through construction, so that we start building our team and branding and getting memberships in place. We will start selling memberships 10 to nine months prior to that building opening. That is one reason it's very, very important that we get our brand and logo in place. So we'll begin marketing efforts, because we really want to create a buzz about, about the building. So that's where we are right now. Do y'all have any further questions? Okey-dokey, thank you very much.
Okay.
On the phone.
Okay. Let's go on to the agenda now. We'll open with the indication by Councilman Ferguson of that pleasure is still... Neil, you're from the Center on Proclamation then. We'll move over to item one on public hearing. Any questions or comment? Item two. So, guys, can I leave right now, even if we have no discussion?
You're not going to have any discussion. You're just going to be...
No discussion. Nobody said anything. Consent agenda, item three. Item four. Item five. Item six, and finishing up the consent agenda, item seven. They went down to reports, and close session.
We do not have one tonight, ma'am.
Hip hop is ain't 20.
We're not stupid.
Okay, we'll reconvene at 7:00. 7:00, we'll reconvene the... 7 o'clock, we'll reconvene the regular session of the Louisville City Council. First item of business, certification by Councilman Ferguson, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by myself.
Please rise, join me in a moment of silent meditation and prayer.
I would just pledge the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is the proclamations.
Good evening, I have several proclamations this evening, so I'd like to, with each one, call anyone here that's associated with the proclamation, come up and join me. And the first one is Crime Victims Rights Week, so if you're here with that group, please come join me.
Hi. You are? Charlene Cullen. Charlene, nice to have you. Thank you.
And let me read this, and if you'd like to also say something, look here. So this proclamation, whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status, and whereas too many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems, and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize them and to respond to their needs, and whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds trust in the criminal justice and social service systems, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, 8 through 14, 2018, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime are offered accessibility and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime, and whereas the City of Louisville Police Department is dedicated to a vision for the future in which all victims are strengthened by the response they receive, organizations are resilient in response to challenges, and communities can seek collective justice and healing, now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, does hereby proclaim the week of April 8 through 14, 2018, as Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Nothing.
Did you get a picture? Okay, so open up.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So my next proclamation is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, so if anyone is here with that group, if you'll come up and join me. Don't be shy.
Stephanie, nice to see you. Hi, Courtney, nice to see you.
See, now they follow.
How you doing?
Thank you, nice to see you.
All right, so proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or medical, emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Louisville Police Fire Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications, telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the City of Louisville have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, does hereby proclaim the week of April 8 through 14, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Louisville, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say something.
We're trying to save the city.
All right, well, let's hold this, and then we'll take a picture. The next proclamation is for Fair Housing Month, so if I have anyone here with that group, would you please come to me? So, proclamation, whereas April 11, 2018, marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act provides for equal housing opportunities and prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national origin, and whereas the City of Louisville offers equal opportunity in its housing programs and policies, and has established a goal to enhance understanding of fair housing rights law among its citizens, and whereas the City of Louisville is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting such activities by private and public entities that advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents, and whereas the North Texas Fair Housing Center is responsible, I'm sorry, is a resource for citizens and the real estate profession to learn about rights and responsibilities under the Fair Housing Act, now therefore, Rudy Durham, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, does proclaim April 2018 as Fair Housing Month, and urges all citizens to join us in celebrating the Fair Housing Act and living up to its goals and protections. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one more, this is Community Development Week for a community block grant, so, do I have some folks? I know I do.
I'm doing well.
Okay, proclamation, whereas the week of April 2nd through 6th, 2018, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG program, and whereas the CDBG program is celebrating 45 years of providing local governments with resources to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and whereas CDBG funds are used by thousands of neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing neighborhood and human services needs, and whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, and whereas over five years, Louisville has received $2.9 million to fund street and sewer rehabilitation, homeowner buying assistance, housing rehabilitation, and facility improvements for CCA, PD Place, and Special Abilities of North Texas, now therefore, Rudy Durham, by virtue of the authority vested in the Mayor of the City of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, does proclaim the week of April 2nd through 6th, 2018, as Community Development Week, and urges all citizens to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and its important role that it plays in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Do you want to say anything?
Well, I would just say, on behalf, I'm with CASA of Denton County, I just want to say, on behalf of CASA, and I'm sure my partners agree here, thank you to Mayor Durham and the rest of the councilmen and women for the ongoing support. We served 604 children last year that have been removed from abusive and neglected homes, and we couldn't do it without Louisville's support. So I just thank you for that.
Do you want to say anything?
Yes, I'm with the Children's Advocacy Center for Denton County, and I want to say thank you as well for the support that allows us to be that response that we heard about in proclamation number one, for the youngest, most vulnerable citizens in our community that have been victims of crime. We're there so that their voice can be heard, and they can receive justice and healing, and thank you for helping us do that.
You'll notice that all the nonprofit people feel free to speak. It's part of our job, but I really do also want to say thank you on behalf of a very small group of people, the niche called the Chin Refugees of Louisville, and your, the CDBG grant allows us to help them access medical care because of a lack of translation, lack of understanding of our system. Our goal is to help get them insured, to make them responsible users of our medical systems, and without CDBG funds, that would be very, very difficult. So on behalf of them, who are often voiceless, I say thank you to the City of Louisville and CDBG.
Yeah, we all have something in common, we love to talk, so. I'm with Journey to Dream in Kyle's Place. Kyle's Place is the only teen homeless shelter in Denton County, and I echo the sentiments of our other nonprofits, we couldn't do it without you. We have served over 150,000 students through our program, about 600 through the shelter, and we now have our first one going to college, so we definitely have made a difference, and we embrace, change a child, change a family, and you'll change our community. Thank you.
I'm last. My name's Scott Hurst, I'm on the Board of Directors of PD Place, and I want to thank the City of Louisville for their support. We provide care to low-income, no-income children, over 6,000 visits a year, well-care, sick care, things of that nature, and to echo, we wouldn't be able to do it without funds like this. So, I will move on, so we can go watch the national championship game.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Public hearing number one, continued public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for minor automobile services and two associated variances on .572 acres located at 1299 Justin Road. Quick Car Oil and Lube is requesting an S U P to convert existing auto wash bays into auto repair bays and two variances. One, to allow the elimination of the 10-foot landscape buffer, and two, to allow the elimination of the parking lot screening hedges. P&amp;Z recommended approval of the S U P by a vote of 5 to 0. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the requested S U P and two associated variances as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Ludke, Planning Director, available for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Move to approve the item as presented.
With variances.
Yes.
Okay. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, is there any discussion? Okay, counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for minor automotive services on approximately .572 acres, legally described as Lot 1B, Block A, McGee Park Edition, located at 1299 Justin Road and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer, severability, penalty, and effective date, declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number two, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for residential accessory dwelling unit exceeding 500 square feet on .8793 acres located at 1098 Holly Lane. The applicants are proposing to add an accessory dwelling unit to their already existing detached garage. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0. The zoning board of adjustment approved a height variance for the proposed structure, and their decision is final. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Ludke is available to address any questions.
Okay.
Mayor, my property is within 200 feet of this property, and so I'm going to recuse myself from this vote and make no further comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any questions at this time? Make a motion to close the public hearing? Second. We have a motion, the second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve, and I have to say, this, they've done a great job with this house, they've really transformed it, so. Second. We have a motion, the second, is there any discussion? Okay, counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a residential accessory dwelling unit exceeding 500 square feet on approximately .879 acres, legally described as Lot 6, Block A, Holly Lane Edition, located at 1098 Holly Lane, and Zone R12, Single Family Residential District, providing for repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Counsel, we have four speakers tonight. Our first speaker is David Smith. Mr. Smith, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm standing.
Let me have those over here, and if you would, turn the microphone towards you there.
Yes, my name is David Smith, I live at 910 Stone Circle Lane, Louisville, Texas, and I'd like to talk about the Denton County Transportation Authority. You know, since its creation, the three cities, Denton, Louisville, and Highland Village, have spent about $250 million in taxpayers' money funding this organization, and I thought it was time to take a look at how that has progressed over the past decade. If you look at the first page in the handout, this is the Hamilton Study, this is a study done by the Brookings Institute a number of years ago, and it shows the subsidy or the loss experienced by 31 transit authorities in the United States. And what it shows here, if you look at it, I highlighted the DOT system is losing about $4.5 per rider, and if you look at the worst case here, it's about $7 a rider. If you turn to the next page, this data comes from the Federal Transit Administration in Washington, they have a large database up there, they collect everything, and what this shows here is the Denton County Transportation Authority, the A train, is the fifth most expensive rail system in the United States, and there's 64 systems, 63 systems, and the DCTA is the fifth most expensive system in the country. And if you flip the page, this is the subsidy per rider. Now remember, DOT was costing about $4.5 per rider in subsidy, and what the DCTA rail system cost is $22.73 per rider. That's quite. rider in subsidy, and what the DCTA rail system cost is $22.73 per rider. That's quite high. You know, it's way out of the ballpark. It's the fifth most expensive rail system in the United States. If you flip the page again, the, the next is the bus system. This is the Connect system. And you have to do some pulling things apart, but you know, there's two parts of the bus system. One is the student university system, and one is Connect. And if you, if you, if you look at that data, it says with the students, it costs $4.19. But the students make up about 75% of the system, and it's a contract system. I mean, it's a contract system. So it's easy to pull out the data. So when you pull that data out, and you look at, look at the 34 bus systems in the state of Texas, 34 systems in the state of Texas, DCTA, it costs $12.79 every time someone gets on or off a train, a bus system, $12.79. That makes it the sixth most expensive system in Texas, sixth most expensive system in Texas. The, the next graph is the fare. This is what the citizens who, who ride on the bus system and their contribution to the cost. So in this situation, basically, the riders are paying about 6% of the cost of the DCTA bus system, the Connect system, which makes them, out of the 66 systems, the least, oh, sorry, that's actually rail, the least efficient collection of money. I got these things a little out of, out of things. The next, the next item of DCTA is called demand response. That's probably the most important role they play, right? They take care of elderly and handicap people. And it, and this comparison's across the state of Texas. There are roughly 49 systems in the state of Texas, and if you look at that chart, for every time they pick someone up, it's $44.48. There's also reason they have a Frisco contract, which that's about $46.35. So it's fairly priced, fairly priced. But that makes them the most, the eighth most expensive system in the state of Texas.
Okay. Do you have one minute?
I'm, I'm, I'm done. I, I have a lengthy presentation. Some of the members have seen it, and I'd like to, if anybody's interested in seeing it, I'd love to share it with them. But otherwise, I'll come back and use my five minutes, you know, in multiple meetings and go through the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Davenport. Mr. Davenport, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Steve Davenport. I live at 1330 Blue Jay Drive in Lewisville, Texas. Been a resident since 1986. And as a veteran, I've had the opportunity, the honor and privilege to be a part of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And recently, I wanted to bring to the attention of Lewisville the opportunity to bring the Traveling Wall, the Wall That Heals, to our community. So I have a little handout. I don't have a lot planned. It's just an idea that I'd like any help from the city to bring this to fruition. I've talked to the people at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and they gave me a little handout. And having history with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, as an over-the-road truck driver for 30 years, I've had the opportunity to bring the wall to different towns and cities across the country. And I believe it would be a real feather in the cap for the city of Lewisville if we could bring it to my hometown. And I'm willing and looking forward to the opportunity to see if this project can happen. And I don't have a lot planned, but I have a little handout I can bring, should bring it up.
Let's bring it up to me. Thank you.
There is a time schedule. The schedule for the tour this year is already filled, so there's time between now and Memorial Day of this year to set up a way to get a date for 2019 in order to fit it into the schedule for 2019. And I, from what I understand, the opportunity to bring it to a town is in order of getting in line. So I've heard that it's like getting rock concert tickets. You're first in line, gets the first opportunity to pick a date. And over the 36 years that I've been going to the wall in DC, I would have the opportunity to put Lewisville first in line as I'm up there for the friends that I've lost during Vietnam War. And so if that can move the council to help with this project, that's what I'm here to talk about.
Mayor, if I could, ask Mr. Conkey to get some additional information from Mr. Davenport.
Our, our next speaker is Sharon Ellis. Ms. Ellis, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sharon Ellis, and I live at 340 West Walters, right behind you. And I'm here today to speak to you as a member of the Old Town Preservation Society and representing the citizens, the residents, rather, that live in the heart of Old Town. I have to say that the decision to split Christmas came hard for us because we didn't have a voice and we didn't have an opportunity. Therefore, the citizens were a little bit dismayed because prior to, we've had the lighting of the houses in connection with the lighting of the tree. And OTPS has had a little contest going, and Bank of the West has funded it, and we've had some nice prizes and had some nice displays. I'm sure you've seen them over the years, the houses. And they like to do that. And then we had been talking about that this year, this past year, that we would add carriage rides after the lighting and the activities in, in the plaza were over, and go around the houses. They do stay lit all month, and we have had people coming up to the town to see these things. So we just were disappointed that we didn't have an opportunity to speak, and therefore, we did go ahead with our contest, but they didn't feel like they were participating at all in the Christmas activities down here. And it does add to it, and it does bring some people down. So not asking you to give up planning something. Our suggestion would be that maybe you might think of having a fall festival of some kind, and a little more recognition for Thanksgiving, and put us back to the one stroll and the whole community coming together for that. And I think if you look at the numbers, they add up to pretty much the same thing with the two nights, and therefore, you might get a little bit more if we went into a different genre for that, for that weekend before Thanksgiving. But we would like for you to consider that. The residents really do want to participate, and they felt, just really felt left out, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Bill Peck. Mr. Peck, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, Counsel, my name is Bill Peck, 105 West Main, Lewisville, Texas. I am here on behalf of the Business Owner Association, Main and Mill, and kind of reiterating what Sharon just got through talking about, but from a different perspective. The businesses down here have been promoting the Holiday at the Hall, Christmas Stroll, whatever it's been called for a long time. There's probably about three of you on here that still remember it from back then, before the City Hall came over here. And when City Hall came over, it's turned into a bigger festival. It kind of oriented itself back to the morning, and then it's been building over the years. But then now, it seems like we've cut it in half. And then they took the evening section, which is what, excuse me, the, our side of it's always been, and put that before Thanksgiving. And so lighting of the trees, lighting of the houses, having the businesses ready to display Christmas events and that kind of stuff, the weekend before Thanksgiving just is a little impractical and hadn't been real well received amongst the business owners. And they were just wishing that we could push that back to where it was the first weekend in December. We have no problem with having the two weekends, you know, and like Sharon said, if we wanted to do an, an autumn, you know, something celebrating Thanksgiving, something celebrating, you know, the other parts of the holiday season would be great that time of year. We definitely appreciate all the work that you guys do to help bring people down here in this section of town and everything you've done to build this section of town. But, you know, the separating, basically taking what was a Christmas-oriented day, the first weekend into September, I know, December, and splitting it and putting it in the middle of November, kind of twisted a few things around and got a few people disjointed about it. And so I'd like you to consider putting this back on the other side and maybe making something different, or just combining it back on the other side. Either way, it works. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and won't be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, have received no cards?
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
Second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now we're down to reports. Start over here.
Nothing, sir.
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to announce the next Coffee with Cops. It's coming up on Wednesday, April 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. This time at the LHS Kilo Campus, 1301 North Summit. And these were the high school kids, really, kind of fun. We have a number of high school students we're able to interact with, and sometimes their parents. So we encourage everybody to come out, have some coffee, conversation, and hopefully no more allergies by then.
Okay. Russ, I saw you when the recognition of the Community Development Week there. I think it's with the last one, and you were nodding your head most of the time. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, or something?
Well, of course, in particular, I've been involved with the Child FC Center in Denton County, as well as CASA in Denton County, and both great organizations that help serve a number of victims that we interact with as well. So, you know, my heart goes out to those guys and all the needs that they have, and we always appreciate what CDBG can do for those guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, the lake is still three-quarters of a foot above the conservation pool, but they're letting out about 1,500 CFS right now.
It's gonna start raining again here before long. Okay.
This Saturday at Lewisville High School is the annual Keep Lewisville Beautiful Spring Cleanup. Registration starts at 8:00. There'll be coffee, there'll be muffins. We'll get everybody out to their assigned areas and start picking up trash. When you finish, you come back for lunch, which will be provided. I'm not sure what it is this year, probably hot dogs and hamburgers like we've done in the past, or we've also done pizza. And then tons of prizes given away by local businesses that have donated prizes, that there'll be raffle prizes. There'll be awards for most unusual item picked up, small youth teams, large youth teams, adult groups, small adult groups. So it is, as I always say, the most fun you'll have picking up trash, and it is a great time. So be there at 8:00 to start registration. And the other thing that's really fun about it, too, is you've got a chance that you can walk around. There's going to be booths, so you'll be able to walk around. There's always a police car, and all the kids hop inside and get to play with all the equipment and look at it and talk to the police officer. There'll be, usually there's a fire truck there, fire engine there. It's a great time to see all these other things that are going on in the city also. So it's a great time. LHS this Saturday morning, be there at 8:00 for registration.
Thank you.
I'll be there. I'm looking forward to it. It's tax season, and we have tax services for our senior citizens who are 50-plus at the Lewisville Library on Mondays and Wednesdays. So folks can go out there and get their taxes done. You've got three more chances to get that done, Wednesday, Monday, and next, and the Wednesday after that. Also, at Wayne Ferguson Plaza, we have, on Wednesdays, we have yogas, yoga and pilates. So check that out online. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna try yoga this week, weather permitted.
Okay.
So come out there if you want to get a good lat.
TJ.
Mayor, April is Water Conservation Month, and I'd like to point out that in tonight's consent agenda, we approved a water conservation program for residents who want to upgrade and get more water-wise fixtures and whatnot. There will be more information put out shortly, but you can receive a grant if you go to lower-consuming water appliances in your home. We'd also encourage everyone, there'll be a video out shortly showcasing different ways that we can go around and be more water-wise for this month. So look for that with your favorite city council people and mayor. But if you guys are, this time of year, it's time to start testing for leaks, looking for those dripping faucets and whatnot, so that we can prepare for the summertime. That's all I have.
Okay, City Manager. Councilman Ferguson?
Before I get to the MCL Grand, got a few other things. First of all, I'll also be at Spring Cleanup, and if the keys are in the cop car, I'd love to take the first spin and see what it's like. So I've been looking forward to that for a long time. So just, you know, make sure they're there. First of all, for the fourth year in a row, National Recreation and Parks Association is collaborating with Walt Disney Company to fund local park improvement projects across the United States in a, in a thing called Meet Me at the Park. It's during Earth Month campaign, and the city that receives the most nominations during the month of April will receive a $20,000 grant to improve a park. And so you can go to a website, meetmeatthepark.org, and nominate the city of Lewisville. And if enough of you speak up, we just might get $20,000 to put into a park. So go do it. And it's already opened. It opened today. The other one that I found interesting that I think few people are aware of, and I think we'll hear more about, is that the governor put in for, into a program, a national program called the Opportunity Zone. It was created by a 2017 Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, a list of census tracts that could be eligible for very special investment opportunities for people who have, are looking for a way to save money on capital gains, on other income. And so I won't get into the hairy details of how this program works. It's got three different sort of tiers that you can shoot for, but fundamentally, it could bring a lot of investment to the city of Lewisville for areas that, and I won't try to fully describe them, but basically I-35 East towards Railroad and then up towards the Kansas City Railroad Line, and then back to I-35, and another zone, I-35 going west over to 121 and down to Timber Creek and back to 35. So if you can picture those two areas, and there's a lot of opportunity there for redevelopment. So a lot of variables, the economy, where the economy goes could be a variable. It's kind of, we'll have to see where this takes us, but certainly invites, and actually another variable, too, there's plenty of, there's hundreds of other census tracts across the US that are on the program. So people will be weighing, you know, which, where do I want to go and what, how do I want to use my money? But, but it's, could be a great opportunity for some redevelopment work here in the city and a way to bring in money. So on to the MCL Grand live performances. The Lake Cities Ballet will be presenting Giselle, April 6th through 7th. The Sixth Annual MCL Grand Songwriting Workshop will take place with The Flying A's on April 7th, and then The Flying A's will be in the Black Box on April 8th to perform. And then The Flying As will be in the Black Box on April 8th to perform. Lake, Lewisville Lake Symphony presents, and I'm going to have trouble with this name, but Zmitry Ulesuk for piano on April 20th. So we'll be pulling out that beautiful nine-foot Steinway grand. And if you haven't heard it before, you need to go listen to it. Texas Tunes will also be bringing out the nine-foot Steinway for Jimmy Webb. And I've talked about him before. That'll be on April 21st. If you're not familiar with Jimmy Webb, I guarantee you Google Jimmy Webb and a bunch of things will pop up on the reply. And then you'll go, oh, I've heard that song. I didn't know he wrote it. Public events, we have arts talk at the MCL Grand on April 10th, presented by Visual Arts League. The Eric Smith Songwriter Challenge, which has been several times, we'll do another one on April 13th and that's also presented by Visual Arts League. Color Palooza is coming up on April 14th. That includes Chalk This Way. And there'll be, also at Color Palooza, the dedication of the very first piece of public art donated to the city of Lewisville by the Greater Lewisville Arts Alliance. And that'll be at 3:30 p.m. if you'd like to see the tall sculpture that's being put there. And again, the very first piece of public art to, to come to the city of Lewisville. Then Acoustic Jam, always on Friday night, in the, usually in the art gallery. And Art Exhibits, LISD continues through April 14th. And Sam Ivy Monochromatic through April 21st. I mentioned that one last time. You've got to go see both of these shows. They will really knock your socks off. But, and I hate to talk one over the other, but when you go see Sam Ivy, start looking really, really close, really close at the detail in his work and you'll suddenly realize it's, it's, it's a lot of work. But it's amazing what he does. So, but both shows are amazing, so check them out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, counselor? City Secretary? Officers? Thanks for your service to the community. And nothing else? We don't have a closed session tonight, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.